All right, Rob, let's get this show on the road. We'll call the committee in order, please join me in the flag.
What we do is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
I'm here.
Cook.
Here.
Sowers will be a little late. Allenbaum.
Yep.
Kasowski.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
My team's present also.
Good. Thank you. Approval of this evening's agenda, if you would.
I'm will we approve the agenda as presented?
I'll second that. All right, they moved in second and the agenda be approved as presented. In favor of that, did you count by eye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passed, thank you. Public hearing, is now time for the public hearing on the final 2020 budget hearing. For budget. That being said, I'll open the public hearing to questions, concerns, suggestions.
So let me say I did get a budget proposal from the fire department. And there were just a couple of things, actually they that you had requested for SCBA tanks for $4,200. And we were able to give them that, plus their operating supplies. They had asked for $2,000 and I had given, I was able to get 2,700 for that. And pump tests, they're able to give me $75 if they wanted six, and they got $75. And then turnouts, they had requested 1,400 and they got 2,000 for it. So they were able to get a little more this year.
Cool.
All good.
And, yeah, so they've got a little bit more that they can do with, get some things that they need. We also, the budget committee has decided we're going to pay off that backhaul. Yeah, so we're going to pay that off in December, so we don't have that payment to be making through 2020, so that'll be paid off. The only thing I don't know, we still don't know yet on the grant for that street, but we'll be doing it one way or the other next year.
It's all play on my.
Yeah, it'll either be by grant or we'll just pay cash for it.
When is that?
Meetings 21st, I said it no longer 22nd.
Okay.
Of this month?
Yes.
So we'll, either way, we'll be doing that project. The interest rate have been up for CDs.
Have been up?
Yeah.
Like?
Yeah, a little bit, which actually has just about doubled the we got last year, so.
I wouldn't take much.
No, it wouldn't. So that's good. Also, got a call from Christine Trigero. Trig-?
Trigero.
Trigero. We bought the property from them. The, yeah. Her mother has passed away. So
That triggered something.
Yeah, so next year, we'll pay off, we have to pay off the property in full, yeah. So I don't know how much it'll be by that time, but so September, yeah, September, they were in no hurry. We've got a year. And September, the CD comes due anyway, so we'll just pay it off. And at that time.
Too bad her mother passed away.
Yeah, she was 95, she said, and she's and they don't, they didn't, she was just calling to shed a list of people that she had to call and let them know. So she said there was no hurry, it's not a big deal, but. Anyway, I still don't know yet what Leon's going to charge us for sewer and water. So I just increased it by 10%. That's high. So it'll be probably what we're going to.
Didn't we have some projected costs for sewer that came last month?
I have nothing. Unless I just sent it to you.
I think so.
But it's, it's in there and that I cannot find, so it could be less than that. And I think that's pretty much it, as far as additional costs go.
So everybody's, everybody sounds like we're good. All, all the departments are good?
Mm-hmm, everything balanced.
That's good. Scott hasn't been saying much. This is good? Well. I gotta say, business is good. Here. All right. So this is the final document?
Yep.
Seems thicker this year. Yeah.
Thick thicker.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments? Suggestions, questions?
I think we're good. I'd like to thank Doran for the effort.
She's setting this all up. Absolute.
She made it very easy for the budget committee to wander through this thing and get everything figured out, so. Very good job.
Yes. A very good job for a long time doing this. Well, almost a long time, since she started.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
I have the curiosity, I see your, your park rentals. How badly did the rentals go down this year after the fee reception?
I think they were only 12.
How many do we normally have through the summer?
Um, sometimes at 18, it just depends. But you know what, it's not any different, really. They still pay the same hundred dollars that they've always paid, it's just the deposit was more. So they still get that back, so the, the park itself didn't go up.
I think Cleland's was down as well.
Yeah, I don't think a lot of people.
Just the times.
Was there any difference in how it was left after the rentals compared to before?
No.
Okay.
Think it was only one party that didn't haul their garbage?
Okay.
Works, works pretty well. Kind of a, have a nice facility there.
There we do.
And a lot of people say so.
Well maintained.
Parks are very important. Had the lawn is moved within an inch of his life.
I know it.
I love that lawnmower.
Yeah.
One of these days, it ain't gonna be up there.
Yeah, you have to come up to my place to pick it up.
Yeah, they want to use a lawnmower. All right, there's no other, nothing other on the budget hearing, I'll declare the 2020 public hearing for the 2020 budget closed. And move on to important correspondence. Have a notice of an application regarding those travel stop in Easton. Well, they're reaching, aren't they? I thought it was like.
It says right off the end of the Sparks overpass, if it's this area that they were doing the test growing in.
Well, Scott said it was RB town in its entirety.
I don't know about that, it was.
I looked up the tax parcel in the, in the legal description, it was all of RB town.
Really?
It's going to be a big chunk of the property right off, right off the end of the overpass there.
On the north side area.
They need one there.
We got one in Ellsberg.
Yeah, the lawns close that they need to make more money up this way. It's all about the money.
It is, it's interesting because in the past, the county hasn't bothered to send anything if it's this far from town. And now we're 12 miles away and here we go.
It's going to be another impact. It's going to be reasonable.
Well, sure.
Because that's going to drag in business and some sketchy element too.
Yeah.
All that goes with the truck stop.
It's, it's a, it's a, it's not a full meal deal, it's a, it's a McDonald's and a fueling island or two. And Lake Ellen Ellsberg is going to be. It'll be interesting, anyway.
Fast food restaurant with drive-through, fuel canopy, auto fuel canopy, truck parking area, auto parking area, and tire shop.
Auto tire shop, yeah. Good job for you, Jack, in your spare time. I'm sorry, working a tire shop and truck shop in Easton, you bet. Kenny Lugnup, he's got a personality.
Personality for it.
Any other important correspondence? All right. Who's going to people?
People.
Minutes of the previous meeting. I'll make a, go ahead.
I'll make a motion we approve in a minute.
Second. Moved in second and the minutes from the previous meeting be accepted as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Lynn, for doing that. Reports.
Scott? Got all the plow equipment ready to go, and I got snow poles on all the hydrants, and there was a few potpools around town, I got those patched. And that's about it. And I was curious about the parking ordinance. If you guys want to keep going the way we have in the past, if they can get their trailers inside the pole lines, it's acceptable? Or do you want no trailers whatsoever in the right of way?
If it's within the pole lines, it's basically on their property, isn't it?
Well, it is absolutely still in the right of way, but I don't plow outside the pole lines. So it, that, that's how it's, I've always just asked the trailers be inside the pole line. But if you want them out of the right of way, there's a list and.
It's been in the ordinance all along, I think, on that, in the snow removal ordinance.
Be general with my attention.
If you've always allowed it, I don't think. As long as it doesn't impeach replowing.
If it's outside the pole line.
That'd be fine.
Right now, it says none, so you're going to have to change it.
Well, it did before. It did before too, in the snow removal.
No.
No trailers, no RVs during the winter season. So we need to amend that to take that out.
The new normal is not like it used to be. You can go around town, any town, doesn't matter what town, where, and count a lot of houses with 10 or 12 vehicles parked in front of them. I mean.
The gone are the days of the family car.
Yes, yes, the old station wagon isn't anymore. Everybody's got a little rice rocket and away we go.
And nobody wants any snow in front of their house, they push all down to their neighbor.
Right up to the middle of the street of the church.
So the ordinance says no, then I guess we'll have to go by that.
The RVs are camp trailers.
In the right.
In the right of way.
In the right of way. If that's the ordinance, that's what we're going to have to go by.
So as long as they're outside of the pole line, effectively, they're not in the right of way.
Well, they still are.
Well.
So we need to make sure we just amend that part of it and take it out. Because I think it was just newly adopted in your parking, in the parking.
It sticks in my mind that that's been part of the snow ordinance all along.
I think it was, I think it was, isn't it the snow, it was snowplow policy, I think, before. I don't think we actually had an ordinance for snow removal. I thought, I thought it was snowplow policy.
I listened to a discussion on policy this morning on that impeachment program, and I don't like that word anymore. Boy.
It's a, it's a wide spectrum, that.
I think we, we need to amend that.
I just need to get a list of the police, so I need to know.
Yeah. So we'll just.
What's your desire?
We'll just amend that ordinance and outside the pole line is great.
Yeah, we can't remove a complete pole. Otherwise, it's going to be wherever at that point.
Yeah, like it is in the summertime, where.
But, but until then, we've got to go with what our ordinance is right now?
Can we, we can change that. The next.
The next, yeah, the next meeting.
Yeah. Right now, we don't have any snow, so it's good.
Yeah.
What, what if I want one moved out of the right of way? Then we don't have anything in the ordinance that says.
Right.
I think that's.
No, there's the letter of the law, there's the spirit.
Your point was just.
So I what you choose to enforce within, you know, there is some, some leeway in what you decide to enforce. How you obviously have to prioritize when you're enforcing a, a regulation. So if you want to prioritize the ones that are inside the pole lines and put at the bottom of your list the things to do, the ones that are outside the, the pole line, that seems reasonable. But technically, they would, they would be.
I just want there to be a mechanism so that if I want one removed, right.
So, A, outside the pole line's okay, and B, if, if we want one moved from there, we have the ability to.
Or maybe in the contingency, we get a big snow and we need places to put that snow.
So, and like what circumstances would you see that you might need someone out of the right of way?
Well, like Mayor was saying, so many vehicles, they have nowhere to put their snow.
Okay. So like where it would interfere with the plant?
Somebody.
Yes.
Because it doesn't quite understand the pole line and want to stand and argue with it, so they can just go on the hook.
We could maybe write it so it said outside the right of way if it interferes with plowing activity.
I think that's like the policy standard, so that it in no way, shape, or form impeded the plow vehicle.
Maybe broaden that a little bit or, or put any, any town-based activities that, that rooms needed for.
Well, and your other ones.
Or, yeah, whatever, yeah. We reserve the right to refuse service to anybody. One of those signs, like we want to move your stuff out of our way and then.
You just think of your neighbor. This is the neighbor up on both sides if you got a trailer set.
Nobody does that.
No.
Yeah, what neighbor? All right, thanks Scott.
Leewood Street does. Nothing, Jack.
Don't sense us.
I'm talking about the stoplight.
All right. Dora?
No, nothing.
Nice job on the budget.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Along with the committee, the budget committee. Who should be recognized as Mr. Jack Williams, Mr. Steve Sowers, and Mr. Gary Kasowski. Did a lot of hard work on that thing. Thank you. Mr. Fire Chief?
Mayor, if you ask, we had, so far this month, we've had one call for service. It was a burnt point, I responded, talked to a individual, individual, excuse me, and he understood, he stayed with the fire, we had no problem. So done a little education after what they've been doing, and for the most part, people have been understanding. So so far, we haven't had any problems, but, you know, it's still early. But like I said, for the most part, people have been very, you know, kind of, kind of explaining what's going on and the whys and hows and such.
I see less, I see less smoke around town.
And so they've been understanding and, you know, when I asked them to put it out, the last one was, he had just trimmed some trees and threw some green, good green, so it was really smoking. And so he had no problem, he, don't want to ask him, I thanked him, and along we went, so. But yeah, so it, so far, it's working this kind of education and very politely asking them to, you know, put it out for just no more. Let it burn out.
It's reasonable, it's the law. Okay, good, thank you. Get some time. We should get that truck.
Are you available any day this week?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try to get them. If we could do that any day this week.
Any day this week, okay, good.
So if I'm not, Mr. Bland, I've already talked to him, he'll be able to assist you with that, because he is off this week.
Sure.
We had to burn a lot of vacations.
Terrific problem. All right. Aaron?
Need a report?
I need permission, I see nothing. I, in the way of a report, went to the what did they call this thing? Solar energy.
Solar farm?
Information seminar dissemination in towards Senior Center today about Heald Stone and their solar power up here on West Side Road. Didn't seem to be a lot of interest from the community in there, there was nobody in there. So it turns out it's, they want to build a solar farm. I don't know how that works, but well, they have to apply to the county to get all those permits and all that stuff, and then line up the ground and make sure everybody likes it because nobody on Facebook will like it. Whether it goes or not. And then I suppose they lease or buy the property and build the thing and hook it to the power line and away we go.
Ship all the power probably to California.
No. It goes right into local distribution lines.
Hey, well, you know.
They were going to hook it right in
Yeah.
the line that goes up the road.
Yeah, I'm going to come down the hill with it. You think I run a line to my house?
He said ultimately, when they, if they can, it will power about 1,000 homes in the county. Using
We'll see.
Yeah, using 27 acres out of 47, not visible from anywhere, go ahead.
Not visible from anywhere?
No. They're going to paint it, they're going to paint it like Oregon State's basketball court.
Especially from Bob and Tracy Van Loon's property, which is right next door.
Oh, yeah, it's close too. They're probably not happy. Anyway.
Steve?
How are you?
How are you?
It's interesting. I wonder, it makes me wonder with all the talk of the dams getting torn out and the infrastructure, the grid shape it's in and all the rest of that stuff, if a move isn't being made to compartmentalize this power distribution system into a more regional type of thing, or even a local type of thing, get two or three or four of these things this size and power a county instead of sending it all to California. I wonder if that's maybe what they're trying to do. Because Jay's trying to do away with coal and all the rest of that stuff, and he's going to have us in the dark, living in caves again.
I don't think too many people in Clelandburg coal anymore.
No, for power, power plants. Anyway, that's my, that's my report.
Heather, have you got the slips to sign, I'll review.
Oh. Yeah, she does. Yep. Homework. Console, input, anybody? Other than stoplight timing?
I got the resilience meeting from the county head. And that was with Pima.
Yeah.
And they were talking about how you can get grants and how we would have to put up 12% upfront, and then the state would put up 12%, and then the feds would put up the rest. And I says, well, what, a small town like us, how do we do that? And he says, well, it'd be tough. That's about his only comment, was it would be tough.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Well, that's like the phone call you get or the email you get. You just spent $75,000. Send me, send me $50,000 and I'll send you the check.
Yeah.
Yeah.
12% is still better than 100%.
Well, yeah.
That's true.
That's true.
Grants for?
They can be for like upgrading if your water tank needed retrofitting to earthquake proof and anything else that you might, such as a building, if you wanted to upgrade and earthquake proof this building. Or other things like that.
A grant, not a, not a low interest loan, a grant?
No, they said it was a grant.
How much money they got there?
I don't know, they have three different types of grants. And so it depends on what type of grant you put in for. Two of them come up yearly, and one is for I forget what one of them was for, I don't have my note with me.
That might be interesting.
So I can get his card, I have his card at home.
We were, we were talking about more room here at one time, weren't we?
Yes, they had a crown put out.
Yeah. Yeah. We might look into it. Read a little more about that?
Yeah.
Okay. Information for you. All right, anything else, any other reports? I still Rob sent a email. I thought I forwarded to you, I, I remember email about the sewer. I'm remembering what it was. All right, moving on, claims.
I'll hold the claims against the town be allowed and checks drawn on the town treasury for the same. Let's send that.
Moved in seconded, claims against the town be allowed and checks drawn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. Unfinished business. Well, we don't have any. There is no unfinished business, we'll move to new business. A question, guess what?
unfinished business, but it'd be for Mr. Adam. About the house with all the pine needles on it? Is there anything fire department could do to help out?
No, we, we're not climbing that roof and taking responsibility for any damage. You just want them to corner. And I have talked to the owner personally, for about 20 minutes or three, tried to do the best I can to explain the dangers and such. And gave her some options about, you know, kind of what you could do, and that's where I had to leave it. But we're, we're not going to climb on the roof and take a chance of damaging the shit or something like that, so.
What house are we talking about? In the corner of Fifth and Cleveland, Kitty Corner, apparently.
And it's a shame when the town can't help people because
Well, yeah.
you don't want to get sued for damaging something.
Well, even, even trying to rig that stuff off the roof, you almost got to get up there and shovel them off and sweep them off.
And that roof's in pretty bad shape.
Wow, really?
So I.
Shake roof as well.
Been down there a long time.
Even if they went up there with a, with a hose or something.
A leaf blower.
Well, even a leaf blower, but still, you got to climb on a roof and you're going to bust those, all those shingles off soon.
Yeah, and we just don't want the responsibility or the liability for, for that.
And she's probably not to amend a bo, 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 two options, so. What are you going to do, bud?
Like, and you put a few there and
There's a tree there.
Was it any?
There's a tree there between her and her neighbor to the east that's I guess I can't say too much, God, I got one of those trees too. All right. Moving on to new business, we have ordinance number five, number five, 595. The salary schedule. It's in our brand new budget. There it is, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the ordinance number 595 as written.
Second. Move in favor, move in second. That ordinance number 595 be adopted, all those in favor? All right. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. We're halfway there. Boy, this is the 19th. Are we early?
No, because we haven't the.
Usually do this.
Last meeting recently.
Yeah.
But it has to be done by November 30th or December 1st.
Here comes the big, ordinance number 596, adopting the 2020 budget.
A movie adopted 2020 budget as presented.
I'll second that.
Move in seconded, ordinance number 596, adopting the 2020 budget. We adopted, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. You know, I was browsing the newspaper and other things that mentioned different towns and cities in the upper counties budget. There's some other money.
Yeah.
Around between Clayton, Roseland, and of course, not so much over here. But there's, the budgets are.
Huge.
Well, I don't, they're necessary though. Yeah, but they're, they're big. Well, I can't say big, they're just surprising, I guess.
Yeah, well, when you think of all the things that they're doing, you know, like water and sewer is probably the two biggest items for any town. And when you're in, when you're in a, in a local agreement, like we have right up here. Everybody's gotta pay their share.
Yeah.
So you got no options.
Nope. And we do collectively do a pretty good job of that.
Yeah. Well, we got some key people that keep us out of harm's way.
Yes, we do. We do for a fact. Okay. You have any business? Public comment?
I'm just gonna add to what, oh, I'm, keep it done.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry. I was just gonna add to what you said about the Hillstone property, what they're doing. One of the things that they mentioned to us was to be sure to let the towns in the upper county know that they're not getting any kind of tax breaks or anything like that. And so there's gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars coming in.
You said just regular property tax and personal tax on the equipment, so.
Right, and.
Probably not hundreds of thousands. Well, over time it could be.
Well, yeah, the county treasurer's office said it was gonna be a lot of money. And they are taking any input from the towns that, where that money should go to. So that was just a piece that.
It goes to the state and then it goes to the county, to the general fund.
Okay, and that wasn't what they indicated to us when they were talking to us.
It's in the county, so it won't affect us.
No, they just said it would, it would go to schools and whatever, in whatever part of the county. That's what they were telling us, so.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I really don't know. But the towns and cities won't realize any of it, I don't think, sadly. But it's, at some point around the, around the edges of that, we might get a little bit of money out of the general fund. Maybe.
The owners butter the bread.
Thanks for the comment. I forgot, I forgot to say that because the guy didn't tell me that they would be paying the bigger tax rates.
Yeah.
Which led me to asking the question if there's any, any lobbying going on at the state level to amend that. And I'll bet you there is. I know a guy, I'll ask him.
Yeah.
Thank you. No executive session that I know about. So we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Can you talk to you, Erin?
Okay.
Please.